Would everyone join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Before we get started, I'd just like to express our condolences on the loss of Dylan Lovejoy, one of our students at the high school. Tragic accident and Caleb, or I'm sorry, Kobe Swanson is also injured. Kobe understands his stable condition, so I hope everybody will be praying for his full recovery, but hopefully that will happen. This was a tragic thing. It seemed like this year we've seen that happen throughout the state much, much too often to these young people. And as they say, sometimes it strikes a place to home. That's what happened here. So if everyone would join us in the moment with a silence for Dylan Lovejoy and his family, please. Thank you very much. Our prayers for those throughout his family. For those, a child, probably there's anything worse than that. Okay, let's move right along here then. Let's approve the minutes of the September 17th, 2019 meeting, please. Motion, Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkinson? Done long guess vote?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. Okay, did we have anyone sign in and speak this evening? Mr. Ellis?
No, sir. I understood it's good.
Good. Okay, let's go to presentations. You do have several of those. First, we have from the Transportation Department, we have John Roy, the Transportation Director, and Jeff Dyer, the Transportation Coordinator. They're going to give us a transportation update. I think they've given everybody a packet to look at here. Mr. Roy, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
You've got a haircut and stuff for this, didn't you?
Well, I did that last week. Thanks, sir. I think everybody has one. Before I start talking about what I put in your packet there, I'd just like to talk about the transition over to transportation. It's been, it's been smooth to this point. Lots of helpful people there. Mr. Midgiff often talks to us about what we do with such limited resources, and transportation's no exception. It's probably rather the rule to that, I think, because we, as we get into this, and I'll talk a little bit about it, the sheer, the number of drivers we have versus the routes, versus the subs we keep. It's, sometimes it's like walking a tightrope. Of course, Jeff does a great job keeping it all straight. But again, it's just a testament to what, what our people in the county do. They do a really good job. The first day that I was there, I'll share this and then I'll get into this packet, we were one driver short, one run. And you know, I was scrambling as a new guy trying to figure out what, what I was going to have to do. But at the end of the day, you hear chatter on the, on the, on the radio, and they just took care of things in their own way. They transferred kids, they picked up a run that wasn't, wasn't there, and nobody was there to drive it. So, and that's the kind of thing that happens at least a couple of times a week. And like I said, that's just a testament to the job that they do. They do an awful good job. In, in the packet I gave you, it's just a, an overview of our annual report that we have to submit every summer on mileage. And we talk about school buses, they often improve lots of mileage, and things happen throughout that time where you have to put them on the bench and give them repairs. Just wanted to kind of go through this with you to let you know how much they are actually on the road. If you look at the first page, I've got it numbered at the bottom. In the left-hand corner, you'll see page one. That's what I'm looking at now. I have this, these columns numbered at the top as well. The total annual miles traveled, and this is per bus that we're looking at here. I also have labeled there the annual regular use mileage. That's just to and from school. The annual curricular use mileage, and that's something that happens in between the school day or maybe we're bringing a CTE group over, or a gift group over, or anything that happens with filtrings during those times. And column number four is the extracurricular use mileage. Altogether, if you, if you look at page four, at the top, there's a column that I circled one there, and then beside that, you can see the monthly use. Altogether, we're looking at 890,000 miles. Close to, close to 900,000 miles that this bus has traveled throughout the year. That's total. So, so when you think about the sheer amount of miles that they go, and I think that Mr. Dyer told me before that we had 10 minor accidents where maybe the bus got dinged up or something. When you think about the amount of miles versus how many times we actually have to maybe follow the plane on the, it's, it's a very small proportion. And again, that goes to the training these drivers have and the amount of time they've spent doing their job. They do that really well. I just wanted to point that out. Again, you have, I'm at, just flipping back over to page three. It says the district wide bus mileage summary, and this is month by month. You can see it's a breakdown of how many miles we travel each month. If you look at October, that's the one right in 2018, 10. I kind of underlined the 10 on that one. You can see 112,000 miles. That's our largest month of the year. Typically, that's when the data is linked from, from all the programs to kind of base our budgets on the next year. And then it falls off, of course, because of the long session, as often, November 3rd. Sometimes we have snow days and that kind of thing. Then back over on page four, we have comparisons to the year before. Right on target there, there hasn't been much change. See that we, in 2018, 892,000 miles. 2019, it was 890,000. So typically, if there's a big discrepancy there, State Department will maybe give justification as to why that happens, could be taken around off, could be added around. Those stayed pretty consistent. Right now, we have 47 routes. 47 regular buses. We have some retired drivers who are still getting those regular runs. So we are short regular drivers at the moment. We have eight spare buses, four of which are motors or need work on those. Or three of those need new motors worked on, and one transmission problem. So altogether, we have four spare that can get on whether any given, or any given date. This year, we will also be, our lease is up, our lease agreement, I think I spoke to Ray earlier, and that final payment will come this year. We'll be able to look forward to purchasing new buses next, or purchase them this year before the next quarter. We're looking at anywhere between 10 and 14 of those.
Purchasing a lease?
Purchasing. The buses that were leased, I think they have to, they would have to...
Is this similar to the contract that you've had?
Yeah. It'd be the same thing. It'll be the same thing, okay. But we're looking at getting all gasoline buses. And I think Mr. Cummins, when he was here, went through the guy with, with the reasons that we would go with gasoline as opposed to diesel on the cost of those. But Jeff can speak to that as well if you have any questions about why we want to do that. There's also, we got a quote of a bus from International, I think. They're going to, they're going to create something for a demo bus that we may be able to purchase afterwards. And the quote on that bus itself is $9,000. That's without air conditioning, 97,000 with air conditioning. So those are things that we kind of toss back and forth. If you guys have any questions about that, I can answer what I can. As far as the cost and upkeep of that, we're kind of in discussions right now on what would be most cost effective versus what would be good for students, so.
This question you've gone about this one bus, the prototype bus. Now, when would that be available?
I think we could possibly get that this year.
I mean, this before the...
Yeah, before we make the big purchase. If, if it works out that this is the type of bus that we want, then the other buses could be made to, to replicate that.
Is that his new bus, or is it one they demoed elsewhere?
Well, it's going to be demoed out. It's, I don't think they demo it yet. They're, they're going to build it to our specs, and then they're going to demo it for a bit, and we will be able to purchase that at a discounted price.
Is it going to offer the 97, or is it...
Off the 90. Off the 90.
Okay. And that's what the other buses you're looking at purchasing was the price range on them?
Well, that would be, it would be 90.
I mean, assuming we don't buy X number of prototype buses?
Right.
And what's different about it? Is it smaller, more fuel efficient, gasoline?
Well, it's gasoline.
It's a gasoline bus. It's got, what he, what they do, and we've bought three of those so far. What they do is they came down and went through all the extras we want on them, the way we want them built. They're building it to our specs. And we can sign a paper that says that this bus is being built to our specs. And we sign it with an agreement that if we want it, we get first option at discounted price. And we're not obligated to buy it if we don't want it, if it's not to our expectations.
That's the demo?
That's the demo. And if we get that demo, that's the gasoline. They're going to demo it through the state. Then once they do, usually they give us somewhere between, by demoing it, they usually put 10,000 to 12,000 miles on it. And then they sell it to us at anywhere between $10,000 and $15,000 cheaper. But the warranty starts at zero miles, air warranty. What miles, say we get, it's unlimited miles, but the five years, it'll start at the day we take the bus and not when they order.
What size bus is this one here?
It'd be a 77 passenger bus. We're looking, maybe when we go with these others, to replace all the special needs buses that we have on the road full-time. To get four of those, 166 passenger, due to a small area through Hamilton's Creek and Aaron's Creek to keep down from dragging and tearing the doors off, which has happened in the past. The driver up there, there was three doors that tore off. He had a new bus. It's just, if you, when you come off that hill of a sub drives, if you cut, if you don't cut it just right, the door catches, rips the door off, then it's about $1,300, $1,400. So he says, no need to tear up a new bus. Give me the oldest 66 passenger bus you have. So he's driving a 2002 model bus. And because he's going in and out there, so it's due to be replaced. We need to replace it with the 66. But the other ones are a pretty good area, so we need to leave them 77 passenger, 78. That way, if students move out, then we're going to have empty seats. If more students move in, then you're going to have enough room for them and not have to go buy another bus to fit the need.
Jeff, let me ask you, you kind of got into that. Explain, because you did this to me recently, educated me.
Okay.
How a 78 passenger bus might seat 78, or it might seat fewer than that?
A 70, a 78 passenger bus, if you're hauling high school kids, you're going to get probably 60, or you're probably going to get about 50 to 55 kids on that. Because you've got a 39-inch seat for that three-to-a-seat that's designed for grade school. You take high school students, you're not going to fit three to a seat. Somebody's going to be hanging in the aisle. Somebody's, somebody's going to be sitting in the floor if you put over that on it. That's the way we'd like, if the high school calls and wants to go on a field trip, we ask them the amount of kids, and that's how we figure, between 50 and 55 students per bus in order to do that. Now, if you've got, if you're hauling all grade school and just have a grade school run, you could fit 70 kids on a 77 passenger. But you're not going to be able to with high school.
He told me about this recently, and it made sense, they explained to me.
I mean, you ought to, sometime you ought to, if you're out and a bus is there and it's loading, like at the high school or something, you, you should just walk up and just tell the driver who you are in case they don't know you, and tell them, you know, you'd like to look at the bus. That way, you can look in the bus and see exactly what it is. And you've got these, like 84 passengers, and you're hauling all high school. And that's what, that's where it comes in, everybody, well, it holds 84 kids. Yeah, it will, but they got to be awful little.
Back to, the only other thing I have is that we have a group of applicants, probably about eight, eight or so.
Yeah.
And we're going to be looking to start a new class here just as quickly as we can to get some, some more sub drivers and get some more help. We've got a couple of our mechanics who go out. I think one of them is serving just about every day. He's had to just because of the shorts. But we hope he can pick one, seven to eight.
And these a lot of places do.
Yeah.
Earlier, you said we had 50 buses, 50 routes. Then you said we had 47...
We have 47 routes, 47 regular buses that we use. The others are spares.
Well, but you said three.
They're supplemental runs.
Okay, explain what this is.
Okay, the supplemental run is like the one in Dubal area. You have, you have the bus coming from the high school. Okay, Dubal lets out at 2:45, somewhere in there. Then you have the high school bus down here lets out at 3:20. Well, they've got to make their way and leave here with the high school students. The bus that would take these other students home would have to go up, out here by the fairgrounds, it has to go up Trade Street, come back out. Then it has to go up, drop off in Camp Ranch, come out. Then by the time that bus gets to Dubal, it's five minutes after four. So to keep, for those students having to sit there from 2:45 to five minutes after four or kill four, they put a supplemental run on. And that supplemental run actually hauls 22 kids. He goes up Valley Fort, back out, then goes down to Barrett's Creek, back out. Then he goes up Sugar Tree and back out, and then goes and meets another bus, gives him a student to take back to Midway, then leaves the Wyatt Yoffe and goes all, all the way over and up Bolger, up to the mines, comes back out, and then goes back through Flat Creek and all that, and then comes in. So he actually takes like 22 students home.
Okay, but I mean, they're, they're doing this on a regular basis.
Yes.
So they're, it's just like, now, when that person finishes their supplemental run, do they have like a regular run, or is that all?
No, he's, that's, the mechanics, the three mechanics is the ones that have supplemental run.
Are they morning and evening?
Yes, there's two in the evening, one in the morning. Which David Owens is an aide on one of the morning, which has to go into Hart's Creek, because the Hart's Creek bus has to have one student into Ranger at a certain time, and it, the driver up there can't meet that and get Hart's Creek there at the same time also. Then he picks up two students in Ranger Bottom and brings one to Guy in Valley, because the bus is in nine mile and four mile. They go so far in there, they can't get back out in time. So he brings one student to the high school and one to Guy in Valley.
But this is how you, you're using 50 buses in it?
Yes, that's how you're using, well, actually, we're using 49 buses, because we, we count it as 50, because it's 50 runs count the supplementals. But we use one bus of the morning and one bus of the evening for the same run.
A two supplemental run.
But then, the other supplemental that we have is the one that I do of the evening. I, we can't get a bus to come from the Ranger area, because he's in nine mile and all that, taking those students back home at the time school lets out over here. So I pick up the high school students that's here, and I go over and I meet with him. He has one middle school student on there that by the time he gets ready to come out and take her home, I meet with him. So I give him a high school student to take in four mile. And since I'm going to Ranger anyway, I go ahead and take that middle school student, because she lives right beside the other student. To save mileage on that.
I think I understand enough, everyone. Gone.
Now, that's, that's all I've got for you unless you have any more questions.
Lady and gentleman, have any questions?
I'll just ask a general question, and I know the answer, having listened to you all. But in terms of looking at all the bus routes, you all are doing everything you can to maximize the efficiency in terms of the runs, the mileage, the time the kids spend on the bus.
Right.
Yes. It's just, even with a population of students that's declined over the last several years, we still are going to all the same areas, picking up kids, bringing them to all the same schools.
Yeah, that's the, that's the problem. That bus, there may not be as many students in there. Now, from time to time, some of these buses will look like they don't have no students on them coming into schools. What we'll do is, is if there's a run in Dubal, and that driver lives in Dubal and doesn't come back to here, we put them over on another bus. But I keep one bus up there, and actually, we used it this morning. I keep one bus up there that does not haul any students back this way. The other ones do, because this morning, we had a bus to break down, busted the heater hose, which normally comes to the high school. Well, once he came, once he came out of Bud River, over to Woodville, got all his students, brought them down, and dropped a busload of students off at Dubal, I hollered at him on the radio, he went back. And most of you know where Nadine's Barbershop is, up on Route 3? He went back to there and picked up a busload of high school students, brought those students in, so they wasn't delayed. If we didn't have that, then we would have, we would have a busload of students sitting there until somebody come down here and dropped them off, or we was able to get a bus to them. But that bus was to him within five minutes. Yeah, but you got to, you got to keep it planned to where, if something happens, to where you can get to, to the students quick.
I probably misunderstood you, but did you say David Owens goes from here to Harts in the morning?
They go to Hart's Creek, David Owens and Cliff Doughty. They go up across the hill over in River Bend and pick a student up and bring them to Ranger. Then they pick two up in Ranger and bring them, because the Hart's Creek buses can't get to Ranger, because their times are so close together. And they have to go get one student and bring him out and bring him to Ranger, because they don't have, I guess, the specialty that he needs with the special needs. They don't have it at Harts, so he has to get it at Ranger. So...
And he's an aide, David Owens is an aide on the morning runs?
Yes, on the morning.
And then you also said he runs, has a supplemental, one of the supplemental runs that he drives at the evening?
No. No, he doesn't, he just does the aide of the morning. But Dave, if it hadn't have been for him, since school started, there'd been a lot of kids sitting and waiting, because he has drove just about every evening.
That's a substitute.
And a lot of times, we don't have nobody of the morning, so we'll call an aide in to come in and work in his position of the morning, and Dave will go drive that morning run. That way, we're not stranded, and we try to keep things on time enough to where it doesn't upset the schools and stuff.
Okay, I was just wondering why he goes to Harts and...
Well, that's the reason they had to do it is because that one student has to come to Ranger in order to get the education later, in special needs.
Okay, anybody have anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Roy, Mr. Dyer, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, it's that time of the year, and Angie Earle is going to give us an assessment or curriculum assessment technology. She is the curriculum assessment technology director. We've got a big title, Angie. But she's going to give us the district assessment assessment results. No longer embargo, you're allowed to tell us, okay? All right, we don't want to get you into trouble.
No, it's public information now, so...
All right, thank you.
We're good. I have feedbacks for you too.
Is that going to be the same thing you see on the screen?
Yes. Now, what I'm going to show you on my screen, I'm just going to show you how to get to this information on the State Department website, and then I'm going to go into the handouts. Can you see the screen okay, or do you want the light?
Jeff, would you turn part of those sets of license off for us, let's see?
Does that help?
Everybody okay with that?
Everybody okay with all of them?
And I'm just going to show you here how to navigate to it, just so you'll see where this can be found on the State Department site, and then I'll go to the handouts, I'll turn the lights back on. But this is the State Department website, and it's wvde.us. And if you scroll down a little bit on that slide, there's this ballot scorecard. And so if you click there, then you'll see this interactive scorecard page. You can then see state data, which is in your handout, this first top sheet. And it's the first page there. At the bottom, I listed, that's West Virginia state level data, okay? So this is what you're seeing here. And I just want to explain before we get into the details, as you're looking at the bars on the different categories, we have academic performance for English, language arts, and mathematics. And this is the state level data. If you see the yellow bar, the larger that bar is, the more of that area it fills, that means the closer you are to the next progression, okay? So if you have a lot of yellow, then that means you're closer to the blue, which is the mean standard. If you have a lot of red, you're in the... If you have a lot of red, you're in the does not meet standard, but you're getting closer to the yellow, which is the partially meet standard, okay? So that's how this, um, works and how it's designed. And here we're looking at state level data. You can click on your county, this map is interactive. So when I click on Lincoln County in the state map, then it will pull up our Lincoln County data and we can see our overall county data listed. I'm going to turn the lights back on just so you can see your feedbacks. Um, the measures for this accountability data, um, this is for grades three through eight, the West Virginia General Summit of Assessment, and then for the eleventh grade, we use SAT School Data, um, as our measure. We also have attendance and behavior data that are measured on the balanced scorecard as well. So if we look at Lincoln County data, that's in your handout, um, and at the bottom it says Lincoln County data for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. So we can see over all of our elementary schools, we are in the does not meet standard for English Language Arts when that is combined as an average for all of our schools. It's close to being pulled, that bar is, so we're close to being in the yellow, partially meets category. Um, and the same goes for math, um, for academic performance. So the academic performance is how those students scored in English Language Arts or Mathematics on those Summit of Assessments. Now, when you look at academic progress, that's the next, um, category over, academic progress means for that individual student, how much they, for those individual students, how much they grew, how their performance measured from one year to the next.
And that's new, that's new for this year.
That's new for this year, we did not have that last year. So this is a comparison to how students in grades four through eight, because we didn't measure this year's, um, that would be this year's fourth graders, okay? So we're looking at that measure from when they were third graders to when they were fourth graders, comparing their GSA or when they were fourth grade to fifth grade. So that is the academic progress. That's the first time that we've had it on our scorecard. Now, as you're looking at these online, you can click on the, the heading, academic performance. When you do that, you get this, um, explanation and that's what I printed out for you also and gave you, um, the first page and I've kind of hand numbered these pages because they are not in a booklet form from the State Department site, but I just went on and clicked and printed them so you could have that for reference. So the first page talks about the annual targets and long-term goals, which we'll kind of come back to here in a second when we look at the schools. The page two gives you the academic achievement indicator, which is that first, um, measure on the scorecard, which is the academic performance, okay? And then the academic, um, progression or progress is page three there, the academic progress indicator. So I just wanted to give you these for reference because it gets confusing as you're looking at that academic achievement and academic progress and what the difference is there. So let's look at our detailed school level data. Before I move on though, does that make sense? Do you have any questions about that measure?
We're going to, we're just going, we're going all for a three-hour college credit class.
Right, I, that's probably way over my math skills.
Now, are we going to use the same methods this school year so we can compare this year, same test and stuff?
Yes, yes, that's what the State Department has said we're going to be doing, so, yes. Now, they, um, the State Department is part of their, um, Every Student Succeeds Act plan to the federal government, that's this requirement or that's what this data measure is. So, yeah, it's supposed to be state of the game.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so if we look at individual school details, there is a link there to click for individual school details and this is on the backside of that handout with the accountability data. So I printed that out just to make it easier to see. Now you'll see there checkmarks for meets annual target for certain schools in certain subject areas. The annual target is determined by state with a progression to a hundred percent proficiency by, um, two thousand thirty. So to have a hundred percent students, um, proficient by two thousand thirty, the State Department has added in those academic, um, targets, those annual targets. So if we look at Ranger in Mathematics, they met their annual target for improvement for math. Duval for Mathematics, Hamlin in both English Language Arts and Mathematics and then Harts in Mathematics. Now, when we consider our four, um, what are called CSI schools, which are the comprehensive school improvement schools, those are Harts, Ranger, Duval and West Hamlin Elementary. So three of our four comprehensive school improvement schools have met their annual targets in math. And then, um, West Hamlin improved, but they didn't quite meet that annual target, but it's, we have more work to do, which we're continuing this year and beyond with our school and our schools that have been identified and, um, continued support and assistance within those schools with the partnership with the State Department. But I just wanted to point that out because I think it's a point of really something to celebrate that those annual targets are met and we are seeing growth and progress there. So if we look at, um, attendance, when we look at attendance, I wanted to mention, this is not overall attendance, this is ninety percent attendance. So the percentage of our students that attend school at least ninety percent of the time. Um, now, we, across the board, in attendance are in the red countywide. Um, in order to reach them, we have to get them there, so it's, it's an issue at all of our schools. Um, and I just want to mention that ninety percent. So this is for students who have missed, um, eighteen or less days in a school year. That's the percentage of students. So if you want to see that number, the spreadsheet is also something I gave you, which has the red and yellow and is just kind of printed from Excel, but it has, um, a list of all the schools and it gives you the actual percentage data that this scorecard is based on. So I downloaded the data set so you could see that. Um, at first it lists the assessment performance value for ELA and compared from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. And then we have the math comparison too on that one page, okay?
And as far as the feds are concerned, attendance is just straight up, doesn't matter if the student is absent from school because they're sick or on a field trip.
It's physically present regardless of the reason. So it could be educational leave, um, as far as the federal government attendance rating considers that child absent, even though they have educational leave. Or maybe they're on a field trip or some other situation. Um, if they're not physically in the school, then they're absent, according to federal guidelines. So if we look at our attendance, um, page two of that spreadsheet handout, um, you can see attendance value in two thousand eighteen and then attendance value in two thousand nineteen. And there was some improvement, like Harts pre-K through A, there was improvement in their, improvement in their attendance from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. Um, there was also improvement in Midway Elementary, they went, and Midway's the highest attendance value in the county, they had seventy-six point two percent of their students in two thousand nineteen that attended ninety percent or more of this school year. Um, so that's a bright spot. Close behind them is Hamlin with, um, seventy-five point eight, but theirs dipped a little bit last year, so, you know, you can see that. The data can help our principals and our leadership teams and us to be able to support them as well in focusing on attendance and ways that we can reach our students and our families.
I, I know it's common sense, but when you look at these numbers, does anyone think it's coincidental that these schools with the highest attendance rates are also performing the best? It's like you said, you have to have them there to educate them.
Right, exactly. And I think too, you know, part of our approach with our school improvement plans last year, we have social workers, we have, um, support personnel to counselor, well, the social worker addition and then the focus of our schools to look at their attendance, look at their data, come up with new ways to try to improve that. And I think it's a good way for them to kind of calibrate that, is it working? Maybe we're, we've been doing the same thing for a few years and we're not seeing improvement, we need to drop back and try something new or learn from each other. Maybe one school is doing something that is working. So, um, you know, I, I think it's not great, but there is improvement and I think if we can learn from each other and from surrounding counties too, as far as what's working, then we need to try that. Now personally, I think discipline, um, is really a good measure of student success and that's the third page there, um, and there is no red there and I'm excited about that because, you know, from, from a, an educator's standpoint, if you have a lot of discipline problems, it's really difficult to bring your students forward. So I think that's exciting, um, that we, the data indicates from a discipline standpoint, things that are...
How does that discipline data read? The higher the number, the less discipline?
This is based on suspensions out of school and, um, behavior that's entering to we this.
So the fewer events reported, the higher percentage you score, the better you're to score on discipline?
Well, if, if they are fewer suspensions, yes. So sometimes suspension isn't the best option and I think with policy forty-three seventy-three and our administrators, um, you know, they, a lot of them approach discipline in different ways from an intervention standpoint.
Well, my point's just that in looking at this, when you're comparing, it says discipline value twenty eighteen, discipline value twenty nineteen.
Right.
Say, just take Duval, eighty-nine point two in twenty eighteen, ninety-two point three in twenty nineteen. Unless you understand how that's figured, you think, well, golly ned, see, we had eighty-nine percent discipline in one year and ninety-two the next year, how's that better? So that was my point is that basically the more, the more reported instances you have, the lower percentage number you would show here.
Right, right, yes. And that's the, well, let me see, because if you look on the handout too, for the behavior, um, you get ten points for every student who's received no out of school suspensions within a school year. Sorry, I'm sorry, one point. So, um, the higher the number, the better or the fewer suspensions.
Right.
Now, I haven't taken, aren't they changing that suspension rule a little bit? That they don't, that doesn't count against for discipline?
Well, um...
There is some discussion.
Forty-three seventy-three changed them too.
Dr. Pang, you mentioned to us recently that there's departments looking at the attendance metric, maybe, maybe tweak that with the federal government in terms of what county is absent and maybe possibility of some changes to the behavior piece as well, but we can go into much detail.
Okay.
But there is, there is...
So there are changes.
They haven't done it yet.
Okay, I wanted to mention, this is the last, um, graph, because Duval and Midway, they've already had their LSIC presentations, so I just wanted to give you a little bit more detail on their data, um, because the principals had already presented, but we hadn't yet had this presentation and we weren't really ready, that information didn't get rolled out publicly for a while. So if we look at Duval, um, I just did some graphs there from their academic performance, their ELA achievement from two thousand eighteen measured, which will be the seventeen, eighteen school year to the eighteen, nineteen school year. So they had, um, an increase in student achievement, point seven percent increase in ELA and then four percent increase in math. And then for their attendance, they did see a little bit of a decline, so that was a difference of five point seven percent in attendance. And then if we look at Midway, um, Midway decreased half a percent in ELA and they had a decrease in math of three point one percent, but their attendance increased three point eight percent. So from an instructional standpoint, this data is important for our schools and our teachers and our leadership teams and then us as a county team too, to look at programmatically, um, differences and maybe even in the attendance, um, you know, and learning from each other at the school level, having that collaboration. I know I, as an educator, have always learned more in a collaborative meeting with other teachers and other schools and maybe if someone's doing something and it's working well, trying that in my school or in my classroom. So, you know, I'm excited about looking at the data because I think there's a lot more we can do too with the county or then also with our surrounding counties. And Duval's one of our, um, CSI schools, as I mentioned before too, so they've seen some academic improvements there to be heard. Do you have any questions for me about the scorecard or data?
Now, there are, there's no longer any, um, grading scale by the state, is there?
No letter grade, no.
Yeah, I mean, is there anything like that comparable to that, that the state does?
No, they do the balanced scorecard now with all of the different indicators.
So they just provide the information.
Right. So this is everything that the state provides.
Okay. Anybody under overwhelm at the same time?
And the principals, LSIC presentations moving forward, we can also talk about previous events, okay? Now that they've had them too.
Now, we can just, Duval, department, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, next, we've got another presentation, about buses, scores, I don't know what I learned about finance, Mr. Ellis. Maybe there's other things about this and...
Thanks, sir.
Okay. First off, this is not the final copy.
First off, this is not the final copy, this is not, not everything's completed. I'd say by Friday, this weekend at the latest, I'll be done. Working on the Gatsby statements now, it's probably the last two things, and it plugs into the rest of this.
And when you say it's not done, what?
What I'm saying is, I have the most important number of everything. I have a carryover number.
What is this actually called?
This is your fund balance carryover number is what I call it. And if you look at the number I circled on the bottom, that's unassigned fund balance. If you see the number up above it in fiscal year nineteen, it says five million, eight thousand, twenty-five dollars and twenty-six cents, that's our actual carryover number, which has increased because we no longer have to hold on to that OPEB liability for the financial statements and then add it back. In other years, we'd have, I think last year we had one point three, and then we added back to two point three million in OPEB liability. Well, Gatsby, in all their infinite wisdom, has decided we don't need to carry that anymore, so now we can just add it to our fund balance. So what I'm saying is, and I'll explain that number a little bit more, everything that the financial statements do, the templates are about thirty pieces of a puzzle. I mean, there's thirty spreadsheets all tied together that take the numbers from the balance sheet and your revenues and your expenses, which is like an income statement if you're in the private sector. They take all that information and they divvy it up into those thirty sheets, and then they take a Gatsby seventy-five sheet, which is dealing with pensions that started last year, and then a Gatsby sixty-eight, which is dealing with other post-deployment benefits, and you plug those into there, and then it helps you create the notes and everything else. But what it all ties back into is your fund balance, the five million, eight thousand. What happened this year, normally getting back to that, I'd say, I would say Friday afternoon would probably be done. So everything ought to be done in a timely fashion. It's got to be due, got to be into the state Monday afternoon to the paper at the same time that the state has to have it. It has to be to the paper by then.
Of our local paper.
Yeah, yeah, we'll publish it. Sean and I know the drill. We've done that before. What happened this year, and I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around it and how it happened, because we keep losing students, which means we keep getting less money from the state. Last year, if you look at fiscal year eighteen, then going back seventeen sixteen, the number three hundred seventy-five thousand from last year and five hundred, almost five hundred thousand from seventeen, all that number is, is your revenues over your expenses. It boils down to that. How much money you got, how much money you spent, you take that total and you add it on to your fund balance. When I started here, the fund balance was really small. We took like twenty thousand dollars a year and added revenues over expenses in sixteen to four hundred fifty-nine thousand. So then we had a carryover of four seventy-seven. If you look at the beginning fund balance on that first sheet, under seventeen, the beginning fund balance, four seventy-seven, then we added four ninety-nine to it, then we added three seventy-five to it. Well, for the most part, it keeps going up. We haven't went down, but somehow this year with less revenue, we, we cut expenses. And our revenue in Fund Eleven was one point two million dollars, almost one point three million dollars more than our expenses. So that's a very good thing. And that gives us, when you add the one point two eight seven million onto our fund balance of last year, you get the five million dollars. Does that mean that we just have five million dollars we can spend? No, we've already, it's kind of like, if you study income statements, like I have to in finance or accounting wise in school, if you've invested money, you'll look at corporate retained earnings. That's kind of what this is, is retained earnings. Now, that doesn't mean cash. What that means is, this is money that we've had, this is revenue we've had over our expenses, but we're keeping it because we're going to build a building over here, and that's where that money, we're going to take that money out of here, and we're going to finance something over here. So they take those retained earnings and they use it throughout the company to help the company make more money. That's kind of what this is, that fund balance. It's five million dollars that we're using to help finance buses, to pay for gym floors and other things like that. So we have five million dollars. Now, this is the way it needs to be broken down. If you go directly underneath that, we have non-spendable money, that's money that we already know that we can't spend because it's already obligated. Some of it's prepaid, workers' comp, and some of it is, we had some other prepaid items. So we know we can't spend that, so we got to take that out of there. Then we have our excess levy, which the voters approve on, and this is the money we have left over in that excess levy that goes out to the schools or that we use to fund other stuff, in the school system. We keep some of the, the money and instruction to use it elsewhere, but it goes towards funding gym floors and stuff like that with our, and our match for the state, for the SBA. So that's one point two million, and then we got another seventy-three thousand that's encumbered for other purposes. Then we took two million dollars that we assumed we were going to have and we used it to balance the budget. This budget, two thousand twenty, I did it last spring. I said, well, I'm confident, actually the state told me, they said, Ray, we're confident you're going to have two million dollars, just go ahead and put that in the budget, which made the budgeting process so much easier. Because if you remember a couple of years ago, I was sweating over, I think, a hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars, and I had all the revenues matched, all the expenses, and it was, it was tough to do, and now they're saying, we're going to give you, you got two million dollars. Well, I don't have to worry about balancing the budget.
You were able to balance the budget on anticipated, right?
Yeah, but I really didn't have to use it. What I did was, when they told me that, I went back and increased some of the stuff to transportation and maintenance I took out and used maybe two hundred fifty thousand dollars of that, maybe less, because I wasn't worried about it. Well, they keep telling me you're going to have, you know, this money left over. Well, next year, they're going to tell me to do more. I wouldn't be surprised if they'll have me use more than two million dollars, so I'm not really sure. But that leaves a million six that we're really, if you look at the real numbers and what that five million means, we're down to one point six million dollars. It's a carryover number that you could go to the bank on, but. That's the kind of money that, you know, we still got our situation at Duval with, with that portion of the building that we're worried about. If anything would ever happen to where somebody would say, hey, you need to replace that. If that's an eight million dollar project and the SBA says, we, you know, we'll fund seventy-five percent of, well, that's too many dollars, we have to come up right then. It's not too many dollars that you can earn in the three years of projects going on. You have to be able to encumber that money right then. So, and there's all so many things. Like I said, I can't fully explain how we were able to do that. I know that the food service number was really good. What you do at the end of the year is you, you spend all this money in Fund Sixty-One for food service, and you may, you look at the, the revenue that you get from the federal government, because that's where most, just about maybe ninety-five percent of the money comes from is from the federal government. And you got to transfer money from the general fund to Fund Sixty-One to cover that, and there wasn't that much to cover this year. So food service helped out with that, but that might explain two hundred thousand dollars. That don't explain, you know, the other seven hundred thousand that kind of surprised me. But I've, I've always given credit to the other directors. When I came in here, everybody had the mentality, hey, we're, we're hiring somebody, let's find a grant to put them in. Let's, let's don't pay them out of county, let's, let's put them in a place to where somebody else is paying for them. And that's the mentality, and everybody, I think all the directors, I see them question stuff to where I don't have to say no. I've had to say no so little that it just, everybody's disciplined, and that helps us out. Everybody looks for ways. Our Medicaid numbers were up, and that helps this. I mean, it was, that, that's another big reason was Medicaid. We received maybe four hundred thousand, I can't remember that exact number. Do you remember that, Robert?
No, I don't think.
But, and a lot of that comes because of changes we made two and three years ago, whenever Ricky had come up with the idea, well, I can't get reimbursed with this person, so I will stick them in a federal fund, so we pay them out of federal money. And then somebody you can get reimbursed for, you stick them in county, because the services they do, Medicaid will pay for it, so if they're paid by county funds, we can get their reimbursement. I think that that's coming through and paying the dividends now is what's happening because the settlement was larger than what was normal. So I think something we did three years ago, whenever I first started, that, you know, it wasn't my idea, that was Ricky's idea to come up with that, and she's the one who looked at that daily. You got to give some credit there, and all the directors are like that. We've done things now, the state's getting ready to give us extra money for social workers and things like that. We've already got those people hired, and we're already paying them with federal funds. Of course, federal funds are going to run out in a couple of years. So I think that we need to really just continue to be really conservative with everything we do and, you know, things keep.
Well, we've, we've talked about that additional money here as a cabinet, that, that we probably need to swirl all that money away, knowing that those social workers, the majority of them are being funded through federal programs, and the possibility that money could go away. We'd like to be able to keep them, keep those positions after next year.
That's, that's a real good point, because the CSI money, I think, is what we're using.
And it goes away. Four positions are funded currently.
Through that, and then aren't we paying, weren't we using some title one money?
Title one's spot covering the other ones. Title one's not going to go away, but CSI will.
I don't, the years, number of years escaped me, but here several years ago, did we run into a situation where the funding expired?
Councilman Grant.
Yeah.
Ended up losing about six positions.
See, what you're trying to do is, you know, it prevents that.
We, we don't want that to happen, so if the state's giving us extra money for those positions and we already got them, let's, don't add positions that we may or may not need, let's keep it the way it is. And what that does, it actually helps us with our, our formula, we won't be over, I mean, I think we figured it out to me. That'll maybe be four positions that will help us get closer to being, you know, like the word a couple of years ago, down to one.
Another thing, the states who pretended has encouraged counties to keep, have a percentage above and beyond a zero. It would be equally easy, seventy percentage maybe two, five percent above, and having excess funds available.
You're supposed to look at that based on the revenue that you're going to get in Fund Eleven from the state, I think is the way that they, and we're so far past that right now. We're okay.
Whatever required, what they would suggest, we think we.
We're, we're over that. I, I think if, when, when all said and done, I think the revenue numbers for Fund Eleven is somewhere close to thirty million dollars with state, county, and some other stuff thrown in there. And if our carryover's five million, you know, we're, we're way over that. But I think they look at the state eight number or whatever they got to make there, which is around seventeen, eighteen, nineteen million dollars. So what I'm saying is, we got a, a, a really good fund balance, but that money is already put in places, and if we're conservative, hopefully this can keep growing. And because, you know, we have things in, in mind, we, we've got these positions we don't want to lose. There's a lot that, that we discuss on Monday mornings in that cabinet meeting about how money could be spent and what we're planning on doing. And everybody's really frugal. And it, that's just Fund Eleven. Fund Sixty-One, you know, Kirk here was director for a long time whenever I came in, and the whole object of Fund Sixty-One is spend the money. The federal government's giving you that, we got to spend it, so let's do everything we can to spend, spend it in a timely fashion. We changed our strategy last year, we tried something new with Title One, because we had more money than we, we normally had in, in years past. I don't know if it's going to come back and bite us yet or not, but what we did was we spent last year's salaries out of old money to try to get rid of it, and it's, it's tough to do that. And I'm, we haven't figured out if, if it's going to work out just perfect, but whatever happens, we'll tweak it and we'll go forward with that. So, and there's, you know, special ed is the same way.
What you've done here, is this something that's due by September the thirtieth? That's the goal that you're.
And it's the template and information to, to the paper.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to simplify this for the layperson.
This is what we got to submit to the state in order for them to release our money, right? It's what we.
This is due September thirtieth to be.
Yes, due week from last night, yes.
I don't know whether it's September thirtieth or not. I have September thirtieth in my mind.
That's Monday.
And while we're, and while we're on that subject, because, well, we never really thought about this when we developed our board meeting schedule. We really need to have another meeting.
We have to approve that before it's submitted.
So I was going to ask you, well, I'm going to ask now if you are available Monday, Monday to have a special meeting.
Late.
To approve our financial statements.
Late.
You could do it by phone.
Yeah, I'm saying, I could by phone. Get it late. I'll be on the prairie, along the prairie.
I've already.
Hey, go get a cell, sit over there.
Supposedly there's cell phone service in most of the areas where they are. I don't know, I'll find out. No, Monday, Monday would actually work well. Monday, season doesn't open until Tuesday, we'll just be scouting Monday, so Monday would work, like you.
Six P M, you are available? Oh, that's great.
Then, then I'll have everything, I'll just give you it right.
As soon as you want to send out a G M.
But all the information that's used in there is contained in these little sheets, but whenever we print out the financial statements, it's about sixty, seventy pages and, and all different shapes and sizes. But I know that the most important thing everybody worries about, and that's what the state looks at, is your carryover. There's a lot of things that's changed this year when it comes to certain projects like federal programs. You know, we have to spend the money in federal programs, and then we have to ask for it. You can ask for it, I think, what is it, three days, you have to have it spent, so you just wait till you spend it. And used to, it's a really simple process, and I've mentioned this before. Now it's gotten rather complex, and the other day it got even more complex. It changed the way that I did a lot of stuff. Normally I would just, I don't know, every few months I'd ask for money. Sometimes like special ed money, you couldn't get it till late in the year anyway, so we would carry special ed till March, and my first drawdown would be about six, seven hundred thousand dollars. Well, I saw what was going on across the state, so I changed the way I did some things. But the state auditor has really not, he's not made a whole lot of friends in this, in this sector of the government, because the way we have to ask for the money, we're really auditing it as we ask for it. You know, we get somebody that comes in here and audits us, and they look at Title One, they look at the expenditures across the board, and he more or less wants proof every time of what we spent, and he wants to make sure everything's. We're, I think we're the only state in, in the country that has to do this now, and it all goes back to what happened with the Supreme Court and the misuse of funds that occurred a couple of years ago. And he's upset a lot of people, and I'm kind of worried now, because used to, if, if I'm trying to make sure that we spend the money in Title One in a timely fashion, which Monday is a cutoff for encumbrances, and then we have to everything, expense for Halloween, they're going to start looking at the journal entries we make after the end of the month to move money around from, from year nine to year zero or year eight. And if they don't like the timing of your journal entry and the, the way you back it up, he don't have to give you the money. So it's kind of scary, because I don't know what they're thinking. Now, everything I've done has worked out. A lot of people had a lot of expenses questioned and expenses held, or revenue held up, a reimbursement, I guess I should say. I haven't, but I saw what was happening to others, and I started making changes to the way I did journal entries to where he didn't question a lot. So everything's been okay so far, but I'm really, I, I worry about that, because now we're going to not just make journal entries, but we're going to have to have exact dollars and copies and invoices for everything that we're moving around from fund to fund, and that's just the way we solved problems before. And now it's gotten complicated. So I don't know how all that's going to work out. I know that they talked about making an appointment, fifty-five prisoners show up in his office, so I don't know. I don't think that that'll happen. But I'd say by Friday, I'll have most everything done, including the Gatsby statements, and then, you know, the events, I'll probably work on them tomorrow too. You sit and work all day, it's just, they're not real hard, they're just really long. So, because most of the work goes into this and setting it up, and once you have a setup, you know, the information. And Bertie's been working with me for about three weeks, off and on, maybe a little bit longer going back, because she had some issues where she couldn't work. And what we did, we kind of tag teamed some stuff. I said, you work on this, I'll work on this, we'll meet in the middle, see where we're at, and then we'll go forward. So she's been great. And I, I worked a lot during the day, she works a lot of evening, so the morning we'll have a conference call, see where we're at, and so we're all. and, so we're almost done.
Is this, will there be a special meeting, just, just one hour?
Just to approve the financial statements.
Okay, so that'll happen about tomorrow?
Today, right, no, tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow's Wednesday, right? Yeah, tomorrow.
Three day, okay, but just for this purpose, right?
Right.
Okay, so we'll meet the next day anyway, right?
Right.
Which will be about Thursday. Okay, just clarify, all right, Ray, do you have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ellis. See you Monday. Continue this conversation.
Well, Monday I'll just have you a package, and we'll have everything in it.
Yeah, we'll probably have a lot, we've had time to think through this one, a lot of questions.
I'd say by Monday I'll be able to answer everything.
Okay, let's go on down, then we've heard our presentations for today, let's go down to our administrative items, have a motion to look at those, so, Mrs. Smith made the motion, Mr. Baker seconded that, everybody, let's, let's begin to get talking.
Okay, item A, identical to the purchase of a service contract for Southwestern Community Action Council Incorporated, Ed Stark, S C A C Incorporated, for the provision of an additional preschool specialty aid for Lincoln County pre-K classrooms for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, according to the terms of the contract. Item B is an agreement with Gracie Browning to provide transportation services for a Hamel PK eight student, according to the terms of the agreement. Item C, school volunteers who on occasion may also service bus shop runs for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item D, agreement with Francis Wade as supervisory aide for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, according to provisions of Western Dico eighteen A dash five dash eight. Item E, out-of-state travel for Dallas Plumland to Fort Knox, Kentucky, to attend J R O T C training, December ninth through the thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. And item F, out-of-state travel for Seth Neal to Indianapolis, Indiana, for the National FFA Convention, October twenty-nine through November second, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, do I have any questions, I know everything, is that a all yes vote?
Yes.
Yeah, all yes on the administrative item. Finance, the motion was, this is for Wilkerson, I think.
Yeah.
And Mr. Curry seconded that, Ray?
The schedule of invoices, only four hundred fifteen thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty minutes.
Okay, the press had a chance to put those invoices up, yes, there's a question, is that all yes on the finance item?
Yeah, it is.
Let's go to the personnel section, do you have a motion to look at those, Ron, Red, Brownie?
Item A, employment of short and long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, employment of professional personnel. Item C, transfer of professional personnel. Item D, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item E, leave of absence. And item F, retirements and resignations.
Anything jump out at us there?
I've been over it three or four times.
I mean, it was pretty standard.
This, this one was an easy one, yes, or easier.
Standard, things like that.
Yes, and I've also provided the, the handout to show you positions that we will still be looking for.
Okay, anybody have any questions about any of those? Okay, is that all yes on the personnel item?
Yes.
All right. Now, we're down to comments and concerns, first, let's do any, both board members have any comments, concerns, or anyone? Do that first, okay. Mr. McKeever, anything for the public? Okay, all right, I knew there's one item on here, it's a possible purchase of property, it's the board's desire, we have to do that in executive session, so is there a motion for the board to do an executive session to discuss that matter?
Certainly.
Mr. Wilkerson made the motion, Mr. Baker seconded that, so at two fifteen, the board has gone into executive session.
Thank you.
Gerald Hope.